Off switch works. Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting Tuesday, June 27th, 23. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson? Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Maroni? Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandri? Cervone?
Here, thank you. Can I get motions on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through K, M, O, P, and Q as amended.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, those items pass, then the next item?
I move we approve consent agenda item letter N.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
When opposed, we have five ayes, the motion passes. Onto item four, item 3L has been removed from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on that?
I move we approve the appropriation of funds in the amount of $50,000 from revenue federal account to expenditure administration account for the finance office.
Is there a second? Thank you. Moved, seconded by Councilor Testa. So, are we anticipating that the consultant needs this much to complete the project or to get us somewhere close to the end?
Yeah, I think this is well into next year. That's what this would include, well into the next year. I'm not, I mean, I can't guarantee when exactly, but we're thinking it's going to carry us a long way possibly, and I'm not sure to the end, I'm not sure when the end will be because we have to do all these closeouts, both on the grants and also then on the federal side, but, so right now, I mean, I use a consultant every day, every day, and the controller has to do federal reports of which they're going to have to assist him, that's something that he's not used to doing, so it's very active. When I have, in particular with nonprofits, when I meet with them, the consultant's part of that conversation, I always have them available to me to put those grants together. And then we're going to start moving into the phase where documentation of expenses have to be reported, so my office is going to collect the data where other towns would have them do that, and then we just need to have, their role would be to tell us that we have everything that we need to close out the file and help us do that, and then help the controller, so that's, that's the expectation.
And is any of this to cover currently outstanding invoices?
I'm not 100% sure of that, I don't, if it is, I don't believe it's, it's much, I don't think so, but I'm not, I'm not really sure.
No, at this time, there are no outstanding invoices, we've been billed through May 31st, they bill us monthly, so early July, we will see the invoices through the end of June, but as of right now, we have no unpaid invoices.
Thank you very much, Councilor Tada, this was your removal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you asked some of my same questions, so thank you. Basically, my questions were if we think the $50,000, we, so we've already spent $97,000 on the consultant thus far for ARPA, and so now there's an additional $50,000, so basically my concern was just is that going to carry us through to the end, which I understand you don't know for certain right now, but it looks like it'll, it's going to get us close, hopefully.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's really our expectation, I don't, you know, it's, those really are the categories that I just discussed are really where we're going to be at shortly, so it's really just buttoning up that we've done everything that we're supposed to do in, in terms of having the documentation and closing everything out.
Sure.
Which will take, I mean, that will go into well beyond October 31st of next year, but I would think the bulk of, I think that, it's our belief that the $50,000 will carry quite a ways.
Okay, great, and I do understand, I know I've heard what, what they're do, I know this has been a lot for your office and they're, they're doing a lot, so obviously, I'm not opposed to this, I know we have to pay our bills, my only other reason for just kind of discussing this as opposed to having it on consent is because it's a $50,000 ARPA expenditure, we obviously have to pay the bills, but there's other, there were other items on consent tonight for ARPA, we spent about $400,000, a little under $400,000 tonight in ARPA just on tonight's consent agenda, including this, and I know we had talked at the last meeting about the $46,000 for the fire department, and so I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor, is that anything that we've looked into of spending that at this point?
Well, I'm, I'd like to know exactly where we're going with pending applications, et cetera, so I'm not anxious to be spending any more than we need to immediately.
Okay, so after, so after the nonprofits and businesses, then we'll, we'll look at that and...
I, I think, I think when, when we finish with all of the nonprofits, the small businesses, then it'll be a question of municipal projects and what, what money should be allocated for what programs and, and needs, and it would certainly fall in that category.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Certainly, other questions from councilors? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson? Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Maroni? Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Cervone?
Yes, motion passes. Onto item five, the public question and answer period. And, welcome, sir, we haven't seen you in a while, if you could remind us who you are for the record.
My name is Leonard Gersha, I live at 17 North Bramford Road, Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I've filled two roles, I'm a citizen in this town for 25 years, and I am the Deputy Emergency Management Director in town, I'm sure, I hope I'm in the right spot, Mr. Cervone, but...
Are you here about item eight?
I'm here about the money for Gaylord, am I in the wrong spot?
We are going to have a comment on the Gaylord application when we bring them before us.
I'm out of order, I'm sorry, I'll...
Well, you're not out of order, but, you know, you're, you're welcome to go ahead now, but your comment will be more on point while we're discussing Gaylord.
Okay, I will adjourn, sorry.
Oh, thank you. All right, there being no takers, onto item six. This is to hold a public hearing to consider an act establishing a fair rent commission. The ordinance committee has reviewed and proposed a fair rent commission ordinance, there are, should be copies at the town clerk's desk, are there any questions or comments from the public on the fair rent commission ordinance, this is something that passed the legislature in the prior term, we're supposed to have one fair rent commission ordinance in effect, is it by the end of this month, attorney's small?
Saturday, I think.
By Saturday? July 1st, so...
Mike Glidden, Pomeroy Avenue, I just have one comment, possibly a suggestion, his amendment to section one, you have your makeup of the composition of the board, what I would suggest is adding possibly the following, that one member be a licensed Realtor or a licensed appraiser with the state of Connecticut, one member be a tenant, one member be a landlord. The reason why I'm asking, I'm suggesting these changes is you would be providing a perspective, one, from the real estate market, from a real estate agent and/or an appraiser that could speak to the current market conditions for rentals in Wallingford. Secondly, the landlord perspective, as you probably have heard, the issues with landlords, what is, what is their feeling of what an excessive rent increase is, and lastly, just the whole humanistic perspective of a tenant that, that is, has a kind of say in the game, they're renting from someone in town, I would just ask that you make that kind of change because then you're also casting a net with, looking for people with expertise or just some broader experiences in, in this subject.
So your proposed change is to the second paragraph, second sentence, where we do require one landlord and one tenant, you're saying add...
A licensed Realtor and appraiser would be the one to add.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then I bring it back to the council, is there a motion on the ordinance? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the council, Councilor Fishbein?
So the fact that this is on our agenda, I don't want anybody to get the opinion that we have an issue in this town, as the chairman mentioned, this is something that the legislature is ramming down the throats of every municipality that has a population of in excess of 25,000, you know, when I reviewed this, when I reviewed it up there, and I reviewed it again today, there's a lot of problems here, I'll go through some of them, I did vote against this up there, I do appreciate the comments from the, the public with regard to individuals on the commission, I actually thought, and maybe I just can't find it right now, that as drafted, there was a landlord and a tenant on the commission, I defer...
Yes, the regular members would include one tenant and one landlord, not required to do that, but we did put that in there.
Yeah, I appreciate, I thought that was...
You know, I mean, as to the other members, you certainly, I mean, I do think you need to take great care in, in who you select to be on, on this committee, is, you know, it's a lot of work and it's very, as you know, it's a very detailed, very complicated law and a very complicated ordinance based upon that law, and, you know, in thinking about it further today, I think that it would probably be, be a very good idea if we created a manual of sorts to outline how each type of action should be handled.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't want to, you know, as many times we create, well, the state creates groups and they say there has to be a lawyer on there too, so I, just throwing that out there, not making it a requirement, but...
No, I wouldn't make it a requirement, but I, no, I do think, you know, you do need to consider the experience of people being put on this committee, and it's, you know, that certainly is not a bad idea, but I do think, I mean, obviously, the law department's going to have to be heavily involved with this commission, but I do think the, I think actually creating a manual would probably be a good idea.
Yeah, just, just for the record, you know, the statute really doesn't give us a lot of control here, statute has the criteria, it says, you know, you shall adopt and it will have this criteria, but the criteria is in various places subjective, for instance, this group is supposed to make such studies and investigations regarding rental housing in the town as are appropriate to carry out their duties, so I don't know what that means, and we're empowering them to determine whatever they feel is appropriate.
I actually inquired of different groups and the only source that people told me that they looked at was the HUD data that you can get online into market rents in various areas, so that, that was what, that's the only study that I've come across in looking for, what is it that people were doing, and that's something actually that I think the Housing Authority relies upon too, is they use the HUD data, which you can get online, I forgot what the website is.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about the monster that we make, or the state makes us make, because when we say that a body is entitled to conduct investigations, that investigation could entail, how come we don't, how come private property owners aren't renting more of their property to individuals, which can go down various paths, and I'm just concerned, you know, the fact that we're empowering this group to issue subpoenas and compel attendance at hearings, you know, usually when you issue a subpoena and, you know, there's a procedure to oppose, object, you know, many times the board or commission, you, you file something with the court, you have to bring an action, I, that's not contemplated in here at all, as far as the procedure, that's what I'll do, if I'm defending one of these.
Well, the ordinance wouldn't normally say that, I mean, yes, you can, you can be subpoenaed by a board or commission and then you can go to court to challenge being subpoenaed, yes, but this ordinance wouldn't address that aspect of it.
Yeah, but the compelling, what, what is the power that a board has to compel anyone to go anywhere?
Oh, no, they would have to go to court, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, the fact that through this ordinance, we are telling a board that they have the power to compel, that's really not true, and that's one of the manual things that you're, you know, mentioned.
You're going to have to spell that out, yeah.
You have to get a capius and, and all that stuff. I'm concerned because, you know, we have a housing inspector who is empowered to bring an action, and I think our actions go to New Haven, I recently defended one of those, but here, we're giving this group collateral adjudicative process that could be in conflict with what our housing department has, has determined, and that's, you know, you come back to the, the, the housing inspector has certain training that is required, no such training is required of these individuals, and that dovetails into what you were saying about picking individuals very carefully.
That is, that is one of my biggest concerns about the state law allowing that to happen, and it's almost like they weren't really paying attention to the fact that there's actually a process that municipalities already use, so I do think that we need to be very careful, and we'll see, you know, how that treads, and I think that's where a manual could be of assistance, and I also think that the committee, it could be structured so that the commission actually relies upon the work of the local departments to assist them in doing this, would might be the best way to do that, so that they're all on the same page.
Just one thing, though, that the housing official is enforcing the state housing code, so ultimately, there is a standard, and that, it's found in the housing code, so it's not like he's, he or she comes up with their own ideas of what the standard is, there's the code and even this rent commission can't conflict with what the housing code requires.
There, I think both would enforce not only the state housing code, but also the local housing code, and, you know, the case I recently had in New Haven, there was a drawer missing, there was a knob missing off the drawer, of the front of a drawer, and it was one official in the housing department that thought that was a violation, another individual in the department didn't think that was a violation, so now we're dealing with this. Another portion of this provides that this board can order the reduction of a harsh and unconscionable rent to an amount that's fair and equitable, what does that mean? What is contempl, because I, I didn't see that term defined, is it, do we have any guidance as far as equity in rent?
Didn't those terms come from the proposal that, or the guidance that you had received?
Well, yeah, it also comes from the statute, and, and the statute lays out the, the factors you're supposed to consider when you're making that determination, so, I mean, obviously, at some point in time, you're making a judgment, and that's what it is, and you and I can disagree as to what that would be, but, you know, the harsh and unconscionable, that's a very high threshold, so that, and that's the first threshold that has to be met, so that really needs to be well-defined and, and...
No, I'm just pointing out that it isn't defined, we are given...
No, I mean, I think, well, I think you can find support in law, in, in case law for how to look at those, at that term in particular, I think, harsh and unconscionable, I think we can find some, some guidance on that.
Certainly, it's the equity that's a little difficult to deal with, the, the escrow account, so I read this to be if someone contests their rent as being harsh, excessive, unconscionable, that the rent would not be paid to the landlord, it gets paid to the committee that would hold those funds in escrow pending determination of the case, is that...
Actually, I thought the escrow was really tied into fixing the property, where is, where are you?
I'm on section three, parent 11, or sub 11.
Okay, so then we got to go to section six. Now, if you go down to 6D is when you get into...
That's after hearing, though.
Yeah, but that's the, so if, if it's concluded that you, the landlord needs to make some repairs to the property, that's the purpose of the escrow, is to order, until it's been in compliance, the commission may order the suspension or reduction of payment of rent, if the commission orders constitutes complete, if, only if it's a complete suspension of rent, does it go into escrow, I mean, I'm told anecdotally that this is a rare occurrence, but it's, it is provided for in that, but, so it is a limited circumstance.
So, because, is there a reason why we didn't reference only 6D when we talked about the escrow, because, you know, six has, has four different sections, A, B, C, and D?
Right.
When I was reviewing, it seemed like A or B may employ an escrow account.
I mean, we could, we could tie it specifically to that section, that, I mean, that is the only section that talks about an escrow. I mean, frankly, I was looking to avoid having an escrow at all because I just think it just complicates matter, but it's, I mean, it is in the statute, so, but, I, I mean, I do think it is tied to D, and the only reference to it is where there's a complete suspension of all rent.
What do we do now, because I know the, the case that I had in New Haven, all the rent went to the court, held in an escrow, aren't we basically through this process creating our local housing court, so wouldn't it work generally the same way? If, if, if I'm the tenant and I allege that my landlord, there's asbestos, there's bugs, there's, you know, it's just, it's not meeting our local housing code, and I make a complaint to this commission, it was my understanding, well, it was my understanding that even without this commission in Wallingford, that you are not required to pay rent if the unit is in violation of the local housing code, how do we handle that presently?
Not...
We probably don't escrow.
I, I'm not sure you're talking, I mean, isn't that tied to state statute that a tenant doesn't owe, doesn't have to pay the rent in that circumstance, I don't, I'd have to check on a local level, that doesn't sound...
No, I think you're right.
I don't think it's ever come up, but...
But, but here, we're taking that process that there's either an abatement through the state statute, where...
Right.
It's not owed, or the process that I just went through in New Haven where you pay to the court and they escrow, and it seems like we're doing portions here, and there could be a case where the entirety of the rent, because it's a housing code violation, not a harsh or excessive increase that's being alleged...
Right.
Where I would think all of the rent would be held in escrow pending determination locally by this board whether or not there was a violation, and I didn't see that contemplated in here.
I'm, I'm not sure I'm really following you, so, I mean, if they order a complete suspension of the rent, that's, that's where the only time an escrow is mentioned.
Well, I'm talking at the time you make an allegation as the tenant...
Right.
...that the unit is in violation, so let's look at section three, sub eight, order the suspension or reduction of further payment of the rent, so if you take out, or reduction, right, and just take that clause out, order the suspension of rent, right, that works together...
Right, yeah.
...by the tenant, okay, so now the, the commission has the ability to do that, that suspension is not an abatement, it is a diversion, at least temporarily, until the unit is brought up to code.
Yeah.
So, what is the procedure, where does the money go, I mean...
Well, then, I, I mean, you can't, you have to go into section six, and you have to say it goes into escrow.
Section six doesn't, okay, what portion...
I mean, it's all, I don't think you would, I don't think they, you would isolate that.
Okay, so then 6D talks about may order the suspension, that's where you're saying that that's where the escrow account...
Right.
...gets initiated. Okay, that's, that's fine. We look at the criteria, you know, unfortunately, what we see is that certain individuals think that landlords are just bad people in general, you know, one of the concerns is that we have an arms-length transaction and shortly after engaging in that contract, the tenant has the ability to say, that contract was too harsh, I should be get, given a reduction. You know, one of the factors that's not looked at here is the particular desirability of the unit to the tenant, for instance, you know, you live in Yalesville on Brownstone Road and your house gets foreclosed on, you've got two kids and you want them to continue to walk to school, and right next door, there's a rental unit, and, you know, you, because that place is, fits your family, you'd be willing to pay a premium for that rental unit, you enter into that contract and then shortly thereafter, you say, well, I'm paying too much.
Well, I mean, in that case, the landlord wouldn't be prohibited from bringing into evidence, putting into evidence the fact that that was, you know, that was a purposeful choice that they made to do that.
Where's that contemplated in the factors, because I looked at those factors very closely today, I did not see anything that looked, anything close to that.
Well, the stat, the section basically repeats what's in the statute, but...
Yeah, so it's section four.
Hold on, let me see. No, nothing specifically, that's not in the statute, then.
And I, you know, I appreciate it, and it's, you know, we're sort of constrained by what came down from on high, I do...
But I don't, I don't think that that's something that, you know, I can't see that a commission would not allow somebody to, to say that, to, to put into evidence that that's the factual circumstance that got them there.
Well, the problem you're going to have is a 4-183 appeal, because the court's going to say it's not one of the factors, and...
Right, but it doesn't mean that it's not part of the story that gets told as to what, how they ended up in the circumstance that they did.
But the court...
Maybe that, maybe that gets to be the fair and equitable determination.
Well, when we lay out the factors, that's... Well, when we lay out the factors, that's what they're supposed to look at. Can a landlord bring an action under this process claiming that they're not charging enough?
No. I didn't, there, I will see, then, some towns had that a landlord could bring an action, but never defined what it would be. It's not in the statute. I did not put it into this ordinance. It's nowhere to be found, so, but there are towns that put it both ways. I'm like, well, what would a landlord be going to the Fair Rent Commission for? That's allowable under the statute. There isn't anything.
Does any, does anything preclude us from containing something like that in the ordinance? For instance, housing...
So, play it out. What would they, what would a landlord do?
Well, housing stock dramatically decreases in the town. You have a three-year lease, and the landlord says, "Well, you know, I, I'd like to charge more," and, but the lease doesn't permit it, and because of the housing stock that's in the town, I'd be able to get double the rent.
I don't believe that that, when it's not in the statute. So, whether or not we could do something under a power that we had, so basically, we would be allowing them to come in and renegotiate their agreement through the board, through the commission.
Yeah, I'm just looking at balance, because essentially...
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
That's what...
Landlord-tenant statutes are not written for the protection of landlords. So, it is...
Well, so, some portions, I think, are, but...
These are an attempt to be fair.
Well, and I, I attempt to be fair also. I just, I, I don't want this body, which is just being created now by action of the legislature, to be used as a club also. I mean, there is a good faith intent. I recognize that good faith intent, but I also see what happens sometimes in the bigger cities with this stuff, so...
Yeah, but, I mean, we, we live in some pretty strange times about, you know, people being able to afford rent, and in particular, rent increases, it's a major problem. So, I mean, I think the goal is to make sure you have a very good selection of people to put on this commission.
And ultimately, just, you know, it's a little soapboxy, but landlords provide a vital service. They provide housing for individuals that can't, for whatever reason, purchase a home. And it's stuff like this that says to people in general, "We don't want you to be landlord. We don't want you to be in this business," because government is exempted from this. Any property that is owned by government, they can't claim harsh or excessive rent. And that's just flags, you know? We have the Housing Authority. I'm not casting aspersions at the Housing Authority, right? But it's a little weird that we're only going after, well, government's only going after private citizens here, and everybody should be on the same playing field. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with you that this should be fair for landlords. And, and the majority of legislation out there is really to protect the tenant, but, you know, in, in the example that you give, the landlord enters a three-year lease kind of at his peril, and, and that becomes the contract between the parties. And if the landlord's gonna bring that lease to this commission to be renegotiated, I would think that the tenant would have contract defenses under common law of contract. So, I think if we are going to insert some provision that creates some right of review on behalf of a landlord, we're gonna have to think long and hard about it. The landlord has the cards, you know, at the beginning of the game, and so, the landlord has the ability, with each renewal, if he's, if he's in an annual lease, the landlord can renew, can change the, the rent upon renewal. And, you know, he, he, he kind of is in the driver's seat there, and if ultimately, the tenant doesn't want to pay it, the landlord has other legal remedies. So, you know, if, if we are going to try to create some balance in this ordinance, I really think we need to figure out the circumstances under which we do it. So, thank you for the thought.
I, I don't, I don't disagree. I just, I, I think most of us would admit that we wouldn't be doing this if we wouldn't, were being forced to do this, so...
Absolutely.
Try to be fair.
The point is well-taken. Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Regarding the suggestion made by Mr. Glidden, I could see, you know, adding a requirement that a licensed appraiser might be helpful to this. That's just a thought. Regarding Counselor Fishbein's questions about, you know, how would you determine what's fair and equitable? I mean, it appears that in the initial screening of a complaint, there is a, the ordinance spells out the procedure that the commission would follow to determine if the rent being charged was not fair and equitable. I think it's, I think it's, it's fair and equitable to assume that, going through that process, one would be able to determine, again, what is fair and equitable. So, so, I, I mean, I, I can understand suggesting that that's a nebulous term, what is fair and equitable? Well, it's right in the, right in the ordinance on what needs to be looked at to determine if, in fact, a rent is fair and equitable. And if it's determined that it's not, then the data is there to make a determination, a determination of what would be fair and equitable. That's my thoughts, those are my thoughts on that. That, that's it. Add a couple of things, but I'll let it go with that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is possibly the fourth meeting we've discussed this item, and we've talked a lot about it, and obviously, there are a lot of philosophical concerns, but at the end of the day, it is our statutory duty to create this commission. And this isn't giving people free rent. This isn't a handout. This is also not tying the hands of landlords from being able to charge a rental rate of what they can get in the rental market. This commission protects the rights of individuals from being charged rent that is excessive to the point of being harsh and unconscionable. As Janice referenced, there are over a dozen factors that go into determining how this commission will come to such a conclusion. But again, what this does is it creates a fair process to protect individual renters from being charged excessively. So, I am certainly in support of this, as it protects the rights of individuals in our community. Thank you.
Counselor Toddup.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question about something Counselor Fishbein brought up. The, so, if somebody had a complaint against the Housing Authority, somebody who's a tenant in the Housing Authority, they cannot bring that complaint to this commission because that is a government-owned entity? Is that correct?
It is, it's written in the ordinance that way. There are some, argue that someone could be, should be able to do that, at least as to conditions of the property, but we did, right in the beginning, met with the Housing Authority, and, you know, their rents are established based upon a federal formula of income, so, the idea that you would get involved in that doesn't seem to be appropriate to us. That's why I wrote it that way. But there are some people who argue that it should be able to go there, too.
Does the state statute allow that?
Doesn't say either way.
And then, also, I, I know I already brought this up at ordinance, but I just wanted to bring it up again tonight. If we were to not comply with this, and we just simply don't create it, or it doesn't pass tonight, what happens? What does the state do? What are the repercussions?
Well, I would, you know, it's, it's possible that they seek to do something legally. I'd be more worried about whether or not there's some condition in, in the various grants that we get if you're not in compliance with all of their requirements on a broader scale, which I do believe there's are such grant requirements, that that would become the problem for the most part.
Okay, so, yeah, so, similar, similar to the easement last week, too. They basically tell us, "You must do this," and we don't like it, and we have to do it.
As I always say, they're king.
That's great. So, I know I said it's ordinance, I'll just say it again here. I'm against this in principle. I think when the government gets involved in the free market, it never ends well. I think this will have unintended consequences. So, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if I vote yes to pass it because the state's saying we, we have to have it, or do I vote no because I, I just don't think this is a good thing for our town? So, that's kind of where I am right now. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I get that we, we have to have it, so this is more of an approval of what we are being required to have. The realtor's suggestion, I guess, maybe that needs, if it's at all gonna be considered, I think it should be kicked around. I know that realtors are not allowed on other commissions that we have through various complications. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'd have some concern about making it a requirement as part of the ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, when you come to appoint people, you could consider it, because if you're locking in a position that that has to be that, I think there are potential conflict issues for people in those positions, because they do have to be, you know, obviously, from Wallingford, and when you start to get into, you know, the political requirements of each, I think that could be somewhat troublesome in terms of doing. Not that you shouldn't consider those types of people for the commission to actually be appointed, but making them a required member, that's kind of why I only put one landlord and one tenant in there. You didn't have to put that in at all. I did think it was a good idea, but I didn't do it with the alternates, because I think you're just gonna get bogged down in trying to match up all the prospective appointees. That's why I did it, but, I mean, it's definitely a good idea in terms of looking at it for appointment, but I, I'm a little concerned about making it a requirement of the ordinance itself.
I'd agree, and I can see that the landlord and the tenants are more in a representative group. The realtors are kind of the middle people, wheeling and dealing to make the money exchanges in the middle, and they may have a knowledge base that is beneficial, but to require them beyond for different reasons. And, and like I said, I know on some land use commissions, there are problems. It's tough. And, and I've been in my fam, I and my family have been in landlord situations, and there will be people that completely abuse this situation where they claim, you know, "This is unfair. It drags it out." You know, and, and some sort of decision by this commission does not guarantee compliance, acceptance and compliance by, by the tenant or the landlord, and it will just kind of drag out. It's very difficult to get somebody out of a unit that you're renting. Very, 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 very difficult. And on top of that, it's very expensive. More than a few months go by without collecting rent, and then you're paying extra money on top of it for legal fees, and the town comes out to collect materials, and it's, it's a whole process. So, none of this is easy. I appreciate that there are definitely probably landlords out there that we need to protect the people from, but there are people out there that we need to protect the landlords from as well. But, as been stated, as it's been stated, this is required by statutory passage from Hartford. So, I got, the way that we have it now, you know, I commend all the work that's been done so far, and we can just keep tweaking it for everybody's comments. Thanks.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, on the, the appraiser issue, I have issues. If a member of the body is going to be opining to the body on what a rental amount is appropriate, that is gonna get thrown out on an appeal.
Yeah, they, they couldn't be the board's expert. They couldn't be that, they couldn't be that, but, you know, the, the point about them having the knowledge and, and understanding is a different issue. So, that's why I, I'm, I think it's worth considering when you're appointing, but I don't think it should be a requirement. But you're right, and that, you know, it's just the same as when you put a lawyer on a commission. That person is a commission member, they're not a lawyer for the commission, and sometimes it's kind of hard to, to keep those two things separate.
Oh, no, I agree.
It is definitely a concern.
Agreed. The other thing is, I come back to the concern about concurrent jurisdiction. How do we deal with a complaint that's filed here alleging a municipal violation of code or a gray? I shouldn't be paying this because this is possibly a violation, and an action in New Haven Housing Court for the same situation? How, I mean, that's not addressed here at all. How are we gonna deal with that?
Well, is the housing a landlord-tenant action, or, I mean, is it landlord versus tenant?
Yeah, the housing code violation.
Oh, housing code violation.
Because they, they, they bring complaints based upon not evidence. I mean, it's complaint. You walk down there, you fill out an affidavit, this is the problem, right? This is gonna be the same thing.
Yeah, this, this is, truthfully, this is my biggest concern about the law, the way they created that. I don't think they really gave thought to the fact that there's all, how these are supposed to interplay with each other. They can't really interplay with each other. So, I, you know, I think it's, I'm not sure how it's gonna be worked out. I'm gonna have to figure that out at the time that it happens. But, you know, it's almost like, I mean, we can't ignore that something that maybe end up being a core order, as if it were somehow of no significance to a commission who may want to do something contrary to that. I, I think that's gonna be the most difficult part about this.
So, is it, and I didn't look at the statute that closely to try and give you some fuel for this, but is it possible that we could write into this that if an action is a pending, is pending in a different forum alleging the same set of facts, that this action is stayed pending determination of that case? I mean, because you don't want to have to rush to court, you know, because they're gonna get adjudication here because there's some expedited provisions here.
Right.
You know, I mean, the case I just had in New Haven took six months, so...
I don't, I don't think I would put it, at least at this point, in the ordinance. I think that it's going to have to be, you know, in, trying to figure out how something like that would proceed, I think we're going to have to deal with the facts of that particular case at the time, and it's gonna have to be through the Law Department to figure out what the commission should legally be doing when something else is pending. Whether or not, I mean, I think there might be too many different scenarios to actually incorporate them into one ordinance, but I do think, that is, that is my biggest worry with the statute, is that that really wasn't thought out very well, and it's, it could become a very messy situation.
Okay, thank you.
I think we'll have to figure it out, and whether or not, you know, we may find out from experience that there is something we can incorporate into the ordinance, or maybe it just doesn't work. I mean, I, that's, to me, that's the most troubling part of the statute.
Yeah, why it just didn't become a statute instead of them saying, you know, "Pass this." But anyway, I defer. Thank you.
I did suggest to an attorney recently that maybe the state legislature could let municipalities have a, this doesn't make any sense test to propose legislation.
That's my daily... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, there are two ways that a tenant can bring a landlord to court. The tenant can bring a civil action, can, can go to housing court with its rent, his rent payment or her rent payment, and, and file a complaint and pay their, their rent into the clerk's office and start a civil action to try and seek redress of a remedy. The other way that a tenant indirectly initiates an action is if the tenant invokes the local building official, and the local building official attempts to get a landlord to comply. The local building official can go to the state's attorney's office and have the state's attorney swear out a warrant, and I, and I believe also in that situation, the landlord has, I mean, I apologize, the tenant has the option to pay rent into court. What's different about those than the primary purpose of this commission is that the primary purpose of this commission is to address the fairness of the rental payment, whereas those other two actions, both the civil action and the criminal action, are intended to address code violations. So, I, I think this, whether I like it or not, this creates an easier avenue, a friendlier avenue, for a tenant to address some housing code issues. And, and the Fair Rent Commission is, the Fair Rent part of this is not something that a tenant can address in any current proceeding. They can't file an action in housing court, whether New Haven or Meriden, to have the judge decide whether or not the last increase was a fair increase. So, there are some differences for the primary purpose of why this exists. So there are some differences for the primary purpose of why this exists.
I agree with that. I think that is why these, required to create this. I do think that is the main focus and I do think that's the main intent of the legislation. I think, you know, they got a little aggressive with the other aspects of it, but I do think that that's going to be the primary focus. If our experience turns out differently, we're just going to have to figure out how to do all of that.
All right. With that, Counsel Testa.
What happens if we don't pass this tonight?
Well, so we're required to pass it. If we don't pass it, I do think, you know, one, we could, I'm sure the Attorney General's office could be interested, but I would be more concerned about various grant requirements, grants that the town receives. I believe that there are broad requirements with being in compliance with all the general requirements that the state government bestows upon us. So that would be a problem. I mean, I think that it's, you know, it's a lot. It's complicated. But, you know, in addition being required, it's not a bad thing. I mean, we live in a time when high rent is a big issue. So, you know, if we have experience with this ordinance that create problems, then we can tweak it. We can look to make adjustments to it.
Well, that's the point I'm about to make next. And I ask because given the number of us here, if two of us vote against it, it doesn't pass. And we should understand that voting no on this as an, just an objection in principle, when we don't have a choice about having one, can just lead to difficulties for us down the road. I would suggest to everybody who has concerns about the commission, the ordinance as written, keep in mind that we're writing the ordinance, we can change it anytime we want. So we can follow the law, we can institute and initiate this, set up the commission, and then as it starts to operate, as we become aware, if we become aware of areas in need of improvement or adjustment or tweaking, interesting, then we do so. So I wouldn't, you know, I think it'd be foolish to expect us to create this monster, as Counsel Fishbein referred to it. I never got the chance to make a monster, so I'm actually kind of excited about this. But seriously, I don't think anybody realistically expects to achieve perfection with the first draft. You know, this is pretty darn good. There's a lot of work that went into this. So yeah, there might be a few things that pop up to say, you know what, we're, we should, we're missing a perspective. We're finding that these actions are difficult to get through. We'll always be able to, you know, redo this. So I think, in general, this is, you know, this is a very well put together ordinance and we should approve it and move on. Thank you.
Counsel Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last ordinance committee meeting where we spoke about this, I don't recall exactly, but I, if I do recall, I think there were three of us in attendance. Is that correct?
That was our quorum, yeah.
Yes. So I'm, I'm a little, I don't know what the word is. Maybe frustrated is too strong, but we're here at the last minute because it's our last meeting before the deadline. And we could have hashed this all out at ordinance committee because I think there's some major concerns that came out tonight that I didn't hear about at ordinance committee. And we could have hashed it out at that meeting and we didn't because there, well, we did, those of us who were there. But I think, you know, now more things have come up. We've also had a lot of ordinance committee meetings canceled. So I, I hate to pass it tonight because, you know, we're at the final hour when there's, I've got concerns with it. And to say we're going to go back and, you know, edit an ordinance later, I mean, you're passing a law tonight. So yes, we can go back and change it later. Then we have to have another public hearing, we have to have more ordinance committee meetings. I don't know that that's likely that we'll actually do that. So yeah, I'm still, I'm still kind of on the fence here. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of it the way it is. But I do, I understand Counsel Testa's concern that with the amount of people that are here, you know, there may not be the votes to pass it and now we're, and now we're going to be past the deadline. Thank you.
So the, could I, so the concerns that everybody's had is really what's rooted in the statute. Those are, those are the statutory requirements. So, I mean, that's what we're all uncomfortable with and I think we have to work through this to see if we can make what the statutes require us to do function. It's really, that's really the biggest concern is to see how it ends up working out. But, I mean, we did talk about, I mean, one of the last, one of the reasons why we're here as late as we are is because at one point I really wanted to try to simplify this and I attempted to do so and I just, I really couldn't because there's too many statutes that are involved in this. So, I mean, that's kind of where we're at.
Counsel Laffin?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say kind of what Attorney Small said. My concern and the concerns I heard were just that we're being made to do this. But what were your other concerns that hadn't have been hashed out that you were, that came up tonight that you were worried about? Because we talked about the real estate agent thing. That didn't come up before. I'm great with not having one. I agreed with everything Counsel, with an S, Small said. But I was just wondering what your other concerns were that are keeping you from approving this?
That's me, I'm assuming?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Well, the, the, the main thing is the part about if a landlord is a government entity, that they, a tenant cannot use this commission to complain about that.
That's part of the statute, right?
No, it's not. It's silent on that.
Oh, it's silent on that, okay. Okay. Were there any others or that was the only one?
Well, I also have concerns about the fair and equitable language. I think that's very broad. I think that's very widely open to interpretation. I'm thinking of a specific example I know, not in this town, in another town recently where a landlord had rents, this is a commercial property, but had rents that he never raised, just out of the goodness of his heart for 25 years. And now the new landlord comes in and tries to put the rents where they should be. And, you know, a situation like that, if that would come before this commission, if the commission says it's unfair because the rent always was, you know, a lesser amount and now it's a drastic increase, or do they say, no, it's fair because it's a market rate? So again, that fair and equitable terminology, I have, I have concerns about.
I think we, we brought that up at some level, right, in the ordinance that I recall? I don't know that, maybe we're just not handling it as well as, as we could. Not that we can't hash it out again. I mean, literally, I mean, we could just put it on another agenda. It's all on us. I just, like Counsel Testa said, we have, we should be passing this. And I think what we have is, is okay. But I'm definitely, you know, yeah, sure, if you've got these other concerns, then we should, we should keep it moving through our ordinance committees.
I think the bottom line is that if it doesn't pass tonight, it's got to go back to the committee. We actually have to, I think we have to show the state that we are making efforts to comply. So we see what happens. Seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Armandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Tata?
No.
Testa? Zeroni?
Yes. With only four votes, this fails. So it will go back to the ordinance committee. Onto item seven, which is discussion and action regarding an agreement for a succession pension contract with Local 1570. Police Union asked me, Counsel Four, for a three-year extension to 2020, June 2026. Good evening.
Good evening, Counselors. Jim Hutown, HR Director.
John Ventura, Police Chief.
We're here tonight to seek your approval of a three-year pension contract extension with Local 1570, the police union. The, the terms and conditions of the pension contract remain the same with the exception of changes that were proposed and agreed to by the parties. It was proposed by the town's pension lawyer to include language on the IRS code and also to reflect the Charter Revision Commission change back in 2017 to change the name of the Department of Human Resources and the chapter of the charter that's applicable to disputes regarding pension contracts.
Now, unlike a collective bargaining agreement where we can send you away and say, okay, and take no action, do you actually need us to take action on this tonight?
No, this would be the same situation. So if you took no action, it would go into effect 30 days from it was submitted to the council. So be a 44-day time period.
Is there any detriment or benefit in either direction?
There's no changes being proposed in terms of any pension contributions or any pension calculations. So that's, you know, your preference.
So business will continue as usual no matter what?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the council? Counsel Testa?
I think simply for public consumption, not related to this contract directly. But, you know, we, there's been some talk recently about the situation at the electric division. And something that's been suggested in various forums, public and otherwise, is that there, you know, the change in the pension plan offered to the employees at the electric division is a factor in causing people to want to go somewhere else. I recall us talking for years about the need to get away from the old-fashioned, traditional defined benefit plan and not being able to go strictly over to the 401K type of thing, but finding something that is more, involves employee contributions and is more related to what we all know as a 401K as opposed to the old-fashioned defined benefit plan. And everything I've ever done in reading about this is that, I don't know of any governmental agency that likes sticking with the old defined benefit plan. It seems like everything is switching away to something and it's usually a hybrid type model. So can you just speak to that? Is, is this contract, does this contract involve a pension plan similar to what's in the other departments and specifically the electric division? And why?
So I can tell you that this pension contract is similar to what's in most departments in the, well, with all departments, including the Board of Education. There are two-tiered pension plans across the entire town in the Board of Education for positions in the classified service. My, my recollection of this is that when we went to bargain on the police and the fire contracts back in 2015, we would have probably begun either the end of 2014, beginning of 2015. We, we did not have the cash balance plan as a pension plan. What we did do with this contract and with the fire contract was that the multiplier was reduced for new hires from 2.35 to 2 and 1/4. We also negotiated with police and fire to remove overtime from the final average salary. Both those bargaining units went from, fire went from, I think, 7 and 1/2% to 9% pension contributions over the life of the contract. Police went from 7 and 3/4 to 9% over the life of their pension contract. So everybody's been two-tiered. Police and fire have been tiered on the traditional defined benefit plan. The other bargaining units have been tiered on the traditional defined benefit plan and a cash balance plan, which is a defined benefit plan under the IRS code. So everybody's had tiering. Some have had different forms of tiering. These police and fire have already been tiered for a good number of years, more than any other bargaining unit. So that's, I hope that answers your question, but that's where we've come into this business of tiering pension plans.
Are we, has the strategy been to approach all negotiations with all bargaining units with the same goal in mind? To try to get everybody into the same general plan?
It's been the goal since, since the cash balance plan was available to negotiations on a successor contract. That has not been a topic for police, but new hires as EMTs in the fire department have been put into the cash balance plan.
So that's not in this contract?
That's correct. Fire's a separate contract.
Right, we have, and.
And EMTs are separate. They have tiering for the hazardous duty employees, the firefighters, and the non-hazard, the EMTs are in the cash balance plan.
How does this plan compare to the electric division plan? You probably answered that already, but I'm, I'm sorry.
How does it tier?
How does it compare?
How does it compare? There are some employees in the hazard plan in the electric division that have similar benefits as the police officers do. Some, some have COLAs, some do not. I don't know if there's anybody left in electric that has a COLA, you know, cost of living adjustment. And new hires after a certain date, which was bargained by the parties, new hires in the electric division, the hazard plan, are in the cash balance plan. And I can say this too, all right? So when, when we went to bargain this, as I've explained to the unions over the years, the, the current plan, that's the traditional defined benefit plan. Because when I, we started to look into alternative pension plans, we looked at everything. Looked at the 401Ks. I went back and found an old 218 agreement with social, from social security and we did extensive research. And what I was able to find was that the traditional defined benefit plan, as everybody calls it today, was in July, became effective July 1, 1975. And at that time, the benefits across all the unions at the time was 2% multiplier and everybody contributed 5%. And I think that's what my research showed. And then over time, the parties bargain and they bargain changes. So right now, you take, you take the police union right now. Back in 1975, they were, you know, 2%, 2% multiplier, 5% employee contribution. I don't believe there was a COLA. But over time, things change and they enhance their benefits. And that's what was explained to employees when we began to bargain the cash balance plan. You can't take a plan in its infancy and make it or try to make it the same as a current plan that's matured after 40 years. The parties will bargain. I won't be here when this happens. The parties will bargain. We've looked at short-term contracts, five years, to give everybody a chance to get back to the table. And if things need to change because of the economic conditions, because we were locked out after 2008, when the bottom fell out, we were locked out for seven years before we began to bargain the changes. And so the approach has been shorter terms, let the parties, you know, bargain to do the best for their respective constituents. The town tries to do its best for the taxpayers, the unions try to do best for their employees. So we're moving into the next round of negotiations for the pension contract for the hazard plan. That'll be in 2025. And the parties will change proposals, share economic data, and if changes need to be made, then that's what the parties will bargain.
So the differences that may exist among the various bargaining units are a result of each bargaining unit's bargaining?
That's correct. Some, some have been arbitrated and the arbitration award came. The arbitration award came out, awarding the cash balance plan. So not, not everyone has been bargained to conclusion. There have been arbitration awards that, that were put into effect. The plans are similar, but there are subtleties. When the parties bargain, they tend to give and, you know, get a little bit more than when an arbitrator says, "Well, here's what you're gonna get."
I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm good with this. I'm sorry to tie you up.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm talking about electric division, but, you know, I figured.
And Counselor Testa, just to speak to this pension, you know, respective to the police department, like, this pension is my lifeblood, because we are in a, an industry right now where we have a lot of openings and not a lot of people filling those openings. So recruitment and retention is of the utmost importance, right?
Right.
So this right here makes Wallingford attractive. So when I'm selling, you know, we've gone from a hundred, two hundred people applying for the Wallingford Police Department to me selling you on why you need to come have an interview with me. And this document right here is what keeps people in the door, you know, what keeps people applying. So, you know, respective to this agreement, it, it's what, you know, separates Wallingford from other municipal police departments in the state.
And that's great to hear. That really touches on what I care about: recruiting and keeping the best people you can get and wanting them to be happy here, you know, and build a career here. And the fact that you've got a tool that allows you to do that or helps you do that, I want that tool available in the other departments that may be having more difficulty. That's why I'm asking. What, how do we get the electric division plan to be something that is a recruiting tool as opposed to, from what I've been told, a reason to leave? That may not even be true. I don't mean to turn this into a different agenda item, but you and I already did. But I appreciate the answers, and I love what you did with this. Congratulations, and let's get these positions filled.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for indulging me.
Questions or comments from the public? There being none, if you don't need action, you're all set.
Thank you.
So we will move on to the next item, which is item eight.
I move we approve a new job description for armed school security officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded in by Counselor Todd. What's going on?
This is a new job description for the Board of Education. The, the annual salary, the annual wage rate for the position is fifty-five thousand for the school year, for the Wallingford Public School Year. And we'll take any questions. Our chief and Teras, the architect of this, for the most part.
So this is a position that serves in the school under the Board of Ed. However, it is supervised by you, chief.
Correct. So the, the position, you know, security of the school staff is the utmost importance. So I have been in contact with the superintendent to try to enhance the security of the schools. And this is something that other municipalities around us do. So this is constructed in a way where it's not an armed security guy. I know when you look at the name, it sounds like we're hiring just like something that would be part of, say, you know, Securitas or something. That is not the case here. This is a very specific position in which you can only apply for this position if you're retired from a police agency in good standing and your certification, the police officer's standard and training council, is still current. You would maintain that certification once you're hired by the town of Wallingford. We would maintain that certification. We would give you training classes. You would be certified under our firearms instructors. You would be provided with our equipment, and you would be under our supervision. So this is a specific program that we did to not only give our schools the utmost, you know, security and technical abilities of the people that we're hiring, but it also allows us to model it in a way that can best suit everyone involved. So it's something that other towns have done. There are towns that do not use the model of certified police officers. I feel that this is a, a better model. It's a more professional model, and it adds more to our abilities to provide what we want, which is security for our students.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Just you had mentioned under the Board of Ed. They are not under the Board of Education. This is an effort to provide safety and security. It is under the police department, but their full function is to support schools. I just, the phraseology, I didn't want people to remember, "Oh, yeah, they're under the Board of Ed." They, they really are not.
So is it in the police department's budget?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So you did say, having read the description, I understand why you say it's targeted towards a retired police officer, but the minimum requirement is five years, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so, yeah, I mean, you foresee a, a lateral move of a certified police officer after five years?
I would say probably five, ten years ago, absolutely not. But in kind of the experience of some of the newer officers that are, are getting hired and going through the process of being a full-time sworn police officer, that for some, they just don't, you know, like the profession. But this is an alternative that gives them something to do, to use their, their skills, and maybe not in a way that they originally thought. Because we are seeing people go through the police academy, go through probation, get their certification through post, and then are resigning. But this would allow them to maybe use those efforts in a situation where they might feel more comfortable.
And would they end up in the same bargaining unit as the patrolmen?
No. So they're not, it's non-union.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Laven?
Thank you. This replaces SROs?
No.
No. So we'll still have actual police officers in the schools?
Correct.
This is?
This has nothing to do with the SROs whatsoever.
Okay.
This is a, a secondary employment opportunity.
And it's an additional level of presence?
Correct.
But SRO experience is preferred?
Correct.
Are you expecting from your current force or pool, do you have retirees that you think are gonna jump on this, or you don't wanna say?
I, I don't know.
Okay. All right. I was just curious. All right. Thanks.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I, I teach at Lyman Hall. I, I know we have security guards. We call them that. I mean, they're, somebody who is basically walking around, making sure doors are secure, they're, they have no, you know, policing function per se. They're just there to make sure the doors are monitored, locked. They're there in case an emergency happens. They can assist the administration. And then we have the SROs. And I think that's been a really successful program. I know, I knew Henry. I know Megan now. And, and it appears that you've, you've had some difficulty because now if you're shorthanded, you've got a full-time police officer that's working as an SRO, but sometimes they've gotta be pulled away. Not only that, there's only one, so jumping around between schools. There's a desire to have, apparently, and I'm, I'm sure this developed through discussions with the Board of Education.
Correct.
They had to have initiated this.
Yes.
That there is a desire to have, let's just say, a better, a higher level of security, protective security in the schools.
Correct. And I'll give you an example. And it's a, it's a real, you know, real-life example. In eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at night, I get a phone call that we received a bomb threat for Lyman Hall, right? That someone is gonna do harm, or there was, there was someone that threatened a weapon. So now I'm on the phone trying to coordinate with the lieutenants on the patrol shifts to try to get someone there for the start of school, trying to check to see if, you know, Megan or, you know, Mr., you know, Brian Keough or Raffone are available to sit at the school. And if I can't get them there now, I need to move midnight patrol resources over to the school so they could sit there during the daytime. If I had someone assigned to the school with the training and experience that I'm confident in that can handle the situation, I don't have to worry about that because I know that that individual is gonna be there in the morning, and that we can do our investigation, and they can provide the security that we need and take that away from, you know, pulling away from our staffing.
Right. So I, you know, my, I started thinking about what concerns I had. And unfortunately, you know, I hate to use cliches, cliches, but you know, yeah, the times we have today, you know, there's, there's, there are threats, and you have to be prepared for that. But it, you know, I, I, in my gut, it bothers me to have armed personnel in the schools. But I know, honestly, I believe it's necess, it's necessary. Someone can argue with me all day long on that, and I'm always open to the arguments. But I, I feel that properly done, there's a, there's a feeling of security and safety, knowing that there's a trained police officer in the building. But you'd have to have, hire four more full-time police officers and have them assigned full-time to the schools in order to have police officers in the school all the time.
Correct.
And this seems to me that middle ground, which allows you to have someone who is, in effect, a trained certified police officer in the school, as opposed to, my first thought was, and I don't mean to demean armed guards, you know, and go, you know, mall cop, but I mean, when you hear armed security guard, it's very easy to think, whoa, whoa, you're gonna hire a service? You know, who's gonna, who, what are you gonna bring into the school?
Correct.
You know, an armed security guard, sitting in the office at a warehouse is one thing, but in a school, it's another thing. So when I learn more about this, at least I put that my, that, I put that to rest. And I don't even mean to insult you, but even imply that you would have considered that. But you see, publicly too, there's a lot of concern about this.
And also, I mean, traffic, right? So traffic, mirage, sheen, Lyman Hall, at certain times of the day, it gets heavy, right? So we put signage in and tried to enforce some traffic laws around there with, you know, during bus pickup. But this individual can direct traffic. They're certified under the state of Connecticut under traffic direction. They can get the buses moving. They can get the line of cars and the parents moving, where we couldn't do that before. So it adds that. And I also have a list. I mean, you know, the, the ASO will not arrest individuals in the school. They're not gonna investigate incidents on school property. They're not responsible for disciplining students. They're not enforcing school rules. That is for the school administration to do.
You knew that question was coming. That was my prime concern above all else, having an armed officer involved in school discipline and of all sorts. And I was assured, I talked to superintendent, I talked to others, and I was assured that wasn't it. So I'm pleased to hear you say that. If the situation arose where there was a need to potentially make an arrest, we're gonna call in the SRO or another officer, as the administration would do any other time.
Correct.
And even though the mayor made clear that these, these people would, are not under the Board of Ed, is it not true that they would still be, for lack of a better term, reporting to the school administrator?
So I would say that-
Or at least working under the direction of the school administration?
Correct. I would say, so ultimately, they would answer to a representative for the police department. Who we, who that person is, we have to establish moving forward. But on a day-to-day basis, just like our SROs do now, they would meet with the school office, speak with the principal, and see if there's any issues or anything that's going on or any, you know, concerns, and, you know, kind of go about their day.
But they're not a police officer, so they're not in there doing investigations?
No, correct.
Making arrests?
No, absolutely not.
Handcuffing kids? I mean, you know,
No.
You know, the nightmare scenarios pop up
Right.
In people's, in people's minds, and understandably. So I want people to, you know, I wanna be assured that, that that's not gonna be the case.
Correct.
And the way I wanted to, I, I guess I looked at this was, you're, and I would hope that this position would be modeled on a school resource officer. In other words, the intent would be, yes, they're there as a very important layer of protection, and there for emergencies, but their role is to still interact with the students, try to develop the rapport, piece of, do, you know, do what all, the things the SRO was doing
Correct.
And would still do, but in a way that is, I guess, easier for you to manage and pay for and oversee and all. Is that-
Right. We, we don't want this individual to be seen as an authoritative figure. Like, for example, my son has this, this model in his school, retired, actually, he's a retired New Britain SWAT commander, but he plays football with the kids during lunch breaks. They, they love him. They call, you know, Officer Tony. They walk, and he's not someone that they see as a, as an adversary. Like, they, they welcome the fact that he's there 'cause he know, they know that he's there ultimately for their safety.
Well, I, that's the impression I got after speaking to members of the Board of Ed, superintendent, and upon speaking to you. And lastly, and thanks again for indulging me, but we're, we're approving a job description tonight. We're not authorizing anything else, right? We're not authorizing the hiring of anybody even. You've already got this in the budget, right?
Correct.
This is just finalizing the job description that you can use to then hire these people and oversee them.
That's correct.
As we do with any new job.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. There were important things I wanted to discuss. I appreciate it.
Counselor Fishbiden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the additional duties section, and one, two, three, four lines down, it says that this individual would investigate. I just heard that they would not investigate. Can you please explain what's going on? You see it? It says investigates and documents incidents.
Okay. So there's this separate MOU that I, I entered into with the school system that will not, we're not, we're not going to, they're certified police officers. They can't investigate if, if they need to, but that is not what we're going to do. That is not what we agreed upon with the superintendent and the Board of Education. They're not there to investigate. They can if they, if, it, it's a duty, but it's not something that we're gonna enter into in, in what we agreed upon.
Well, that's, I mean, we're being asked to vote on what's before us. So I've got a, a two-page document. I don't have the MOU. And the MOU, the, the document expressly says that this individual is going to be empowered to investigate. So how do I... I, I also wanna point out that two lines down from there, it says that the individual would detain individuals. I, I would think that that possibly involves handcuffs. I just heard that it wouldn't, but-
That poses a threat to the school. If you had an individual that was trying to get into the school or is trespassing on school grounds, they can detain them until we get there. They still have statewide, I mean, they have arrest powers.
Yeah. So they, they have handcuffs.
They have handcuffs.
Sub ties or whatever.
They have firearms and handcuffs, yes.
Yeah. So-
They need to have that, or there's no point.
I just heard this whole exchange, and I'm reading this thing, and I'm like, wait a second, you know? So looking at the special requirements, I mean, good standing for an individual who was a police officer, my understanding is that it's still lawful for an officer who is under investigation to retire under the cloud of that investigation and to maintain good standing. Is that still the case?
But they're not, they're not, they're not permitted to go to another police agency. So you're under investigation. If you go to another police, you know, agency, they would have to disclose that. I mean, we're gonna do a background investigation on these individuals.
So-
So if you got-
They aren't going to another police agency, right? They're coming under your supervision.
Correct.
But they aren't a certified law enforcement officer.
So they are certified.
Yes. But they are, they're a, they're a civilian, correct?
Correct. Like, Chief Wright still has his certification through post.
Yeah. And civilians have certain restriction of powers that certified police officers don't have. This individual is a civilian. So the law, as part of the Police Accountability Bill that was passed in 2020, prevents an individual from going to another department or serving as a armed security if they were not in good standing. Am I to understand that an individual who retires under that cloud of bad faith would be able to attain this position?
I wouldn't hire him. I, I, our detectives would do a background check on them, and that would come out, and they wouldn't be hired.
And how would that come out? Because there was some sort of, you know, they work for Ansonia and all of- Because there was some sort of, you know, they worked for Ansonia, and all of a sudden, they're not working there anymore, and in the interview, you ask them what happened? Why was there a separation? That's, I mean, because I don't think that the investigation itself would come out in the background, would it?
It should, if they sign over the ability for us to go in. Like, if we have, we have an authorization disclosure that our candidates will sign that, lets us go and do that, and we can get internal affairs investigations, you know.
But that's still your subjective determination, and I agree with that determination, but it doesn't appear to be barred by this. Why is their training, you guys are gonna have a range in a couple of years, right?
Hopefully.
You're gonna be certifying officers on your range.
Correct.
Why wouldn't you require these individuals to be certified by you?
So they will be.
Okay, but it says, "or a certified firearms instructor." It does not require it to be you. It says the Wallingford Police Department, "or," and I run into this problem with other departments. Why the "or"?
Right, so we would not, I would not allow the "or." It would be our, it's our firearm, it's our issued firearm. No one else can certify you in our firearm except our firearms instructors.
Amen. I, I'm just, I'm being asked to vote on this thing, and I'm reading it. The next bullet, certifications. So what license are you requiring these individuals to maintain? A blue card?
So they would present us with their post-certification card, and then we would maintain that through, uh, we would actually pay for their training to maintain that three-year requirement. So take, for example, like, so, you know, we used, I hate to pick on Chief Wright, but if he wanted to get back into police work, he can use the fact that he's certified to go apply for a chief's job somewhere. And then, once he gets into that agency, then he would be, you know, on their training program to be continued on their three-year certification process.
What's the minimum here? I mean, it's an awful long line. Must maintain security certification and training requirements. Is that, is that, is that post, or is that blue card certification?
So there's security training that needs to be accomplished with the state of Connecticut. There's a class in August that you need to be required to attend if you want to have this position. So there is a post that's putting on a class in August for this specific job description. Not for SROs sworn through the state of Connecticut that are currently working for an agency, for an ASO that would fall under this category, retired but certified.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the "and/or"s in here, because as you go on to the, towards the end, it says "and/or licenses to carry and use firearms or other weapons." I've got an "and/or" and an "or," and I don't know what that "or other weapons" certification is that would be the qualification that's required for, I'm just looking at minimum qual-
Right, and I know what you're saying. They're gonna have a blue card. They would not need a blue card if they fall under this stipulation, but I know, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just trying to read the, um-
I mean, what we can do, once the, because obviously, this is in its infancy as far as, we've never had this before in the town of Wallingford. We've never had this as, you know, in the Wallingford Police Department. So we would have to construct a policy, a general order, that would deal with that. And I think that all that would come into that general order about training, equipment issued, certifications.
Okay, I just have one more. Does the Board of Ed have criteria for a full background investigation, or do they default to the state?
I don't know what they do. I just know that since we oversee the position, and it's part of our budget and our oversight, that we're gonna do the background process.
Okay, but this says, pass a full background investigation required by the Board of Ed, the town, or by state or federal law. And I'm trying to figure out what's the difference. I mean, why isn't it just your background check, right? I mean, I trust you.
So we would do state. I mean, obviously, our background, you know, we do an NCIC full criminal history check, driving check, credit check, and then personal references, family check, all, you know, all that. I mean, the packets are pretty thick by the time we're done.
For an officer, right?
Correct. I wouldn't do it any other way. I would do the same exact thing.
Yeah, but the qualifications for the Board of Ed for a teacher are completely nowhere near. So I don't know why anybody would say, well, Board of Education background check is appropriate here, when I know it's not the standard for a police officer. I'm, well, I guess the other, so the SROs that are in the schools, those are real police officers.
So they're certified police officers assigned to the community impact unit.
And an aspect of their job is to protect our kids.
Correct.
And an aspect of this individual's job is to protect our kids.
Correct.
However, they can't carry the same firearm.
So they are gonna carry the same firearm.
Well, if they're civilians, they can't.
My following. So if they're a certified police officer under the state statute, they should be able to carry our firearm as does most other municipal agencies.
Check with Shelton on that one.
Shelton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Hutt. I had a couple of questions that were, many of them are already touched upon, but I was just wondering if you could explain the process that really led to this point. I know that you were before us at the budget time, and that we did talk about it briefly there. You also met with the Board of Ed in public meetings as well, and talked about this plan. Just, you know, describe how that all went.
I just think as far as, you know, what's going on around us, I mean, unfortunately, we live in a kind of an unsafer environment than we've accustomed to, that there are threats to our students, there are threats to our schools. They are soft targets that, you know, we really need to concentrate on, you know, providing security for. But unfortunately, you know, for the police department, we're stretched so thin that I can't devote people to the schools on a daily basis. And I mean, right now, you know, I wouldn't even call them full-time. They're not full-time SROs. I have, you know, three or four key individuals that will go around and be able to go to some of the schools and deal with some of the issues, but on a daily basis, they have training if they have vacation, and if they're sick, no one's there. I mean, this gives us an opportunity to have someone stationed there for one primary purpose to, you know, supply security to the school, and we don't have to worry about, you know, coverage for that. Unfortunately, it's just, it's a real thing that we deal with.
And I certainly agree. I was reading this, um, this article in the Washington Post about school shootings last year. There were forty-six school shootings in America. Thirty-four students and adults were killed in these schools, according to this article. And all, it says, forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty children experienced school shootings last year. And obviously, like what you said, we need to be cognizant of what is going on in this world, and safety of our students and teachers is paramount. And I think that's what we all want here, is to keep our kids safe. I was sent a study this afternoon, and I just wanted to read this to you. It's a 2021 study conducted by researchers from University at Alabama in Rand, examined data from US schools between 2014 to 2018 to evaluate the impact of school resource officers. And the study found that school resource officers appear to protect students from a non-trivial number of physical attacks and fights within schools, which could have long-term academic and psychological benefits for students. But schools with resource officers also report more suspensions, expulsions, police referrals, and student arrests. And those harsher disciplinary punishments disproportionately fall on black students, male students, and students with disabilities. And so that's a little concerning to me. You know, you did touch upon disciplinary matters, and I think that addressed that a little bit, but could you just touch upon those concerns?
So our SROs that we have in now, and Counselor Testa could attest to this, you know, they deal with issues that are brought to their attention by the school administration, like their drug and narcotic usage, issues in the family home, issues that would require DCF involvement, sexual assault investigations, harassment, bullying, those kind of things, where you really needed immediate intervention. And it's not an intervention that's negative, because you're dealing with a victim, right? So, you know, we have allowed our school resource officers to be available. I mean, I know the one that we've talked about, that's assigned to Sheen and also goes to William Hall, people feel comfortable talking to her, and we've been able to provide a lot of different resources to some of the students that normally would not be available, just because of the relationship that they've, you know, been able to cultivate through the relationships that they have. So I know that, you know, each municipality, each school system is different. I can only say that in Wallingford, I think that the presence of some of our SROs has actually increased the level of trust between the police and some of the students, and has given them an avenue and a resource that normally they would not have.
Well, thank you. And, you know, I have the utmost respect and full faith in the work that you do for our community and your department does. I think you guys do phenomenal work. And thank you for answering my questions. I will be supporting this tonight.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, again. So this is something that I think none of us want to have to have, right? But it's, like others have said, it's just, unfortunately, the world we live in now. And, you know, God forbid there ever was a situation, and we have the opportunity tonight to, you know, to hopefully lessen the impact of it, or hopefully, this serves as a deterrent. I mean, that's my ultimate hope, is that, you know, somebody who would be thinking of harming our children maybe wouldn't do it here, because they know that we have that, you know, that armed officer in the school. I just, I hate when, you know, you hear these stories of things happening, and everybody always says, you know, I never thought it would happen here. And we love to think it would never happen here, but, you know, God forbid it ever did. I think having someone there who can react in seconds as opposed to minutes, you know, could save lives. So I'm supportive of this. I know I've been talking to you about this for several years now. Again, I just think it's, hopefully, a deterrent. I do know several other towns that have similar officers. I know a couple of them personally, and it's been good for those towns. I think the students respect them, the parents respect them. It's a good situation. I think it's seen as a friendly person in the school. And, you know, hopefully, they never, they never need to be used. Hopefully, they're just there every day, they're a friendly face, everybody knows them, and I'm supportive of this. Again, I think, you know, none of us want to have to do it, but I do think it's a good thing to protect our children. Thank you.
That's all I have from the council. Questions, comments from the public? Name an address for the record, please.
Howdy. Ben Highland, over at Eighteen Hall Place. So a few different things after hearing the officer speak. First, you know, he gave two examples, which are really troublesome, because you're giving an example of traffic and then a bomb threat. So first, traffic, you don't need a gun to direct traffic. So there's that. And then, we're talking about the bomb threat. The individual that you're gonna be bringing in, is they gonna be trained specifically in bomb detection and bomb disarmament? Because if not, then them being there for that bomb threat provides no additional value than what we would experience with perhaps just a regular police officer. So that was a little troubling as far as your explanation. The ambiguous nature of the actual document for the job qualifications was troublesome. You know, I know Counselor Fishbein pointed out a lot of them, and he's right. You know, there's way too much ambiguity in that, and it really needs to be better defined before we can proceed in actually having any sort of job description.
Mr. Highland, apparently, the mic is not picking you up.
Oh, sorry. I thought I'm just loud enough. So, so the document itself does need to be revised, I think, before it can be put forth. And I would ask the council to not approve it today, just because it doesn't necessarily have all the necessary pertinent material to actually decide on who the individual's gonna be. But so, before you had spoke, you know, I sort of had some things written up. So I'm not a proponent of guns in schools. While I do understand the potential peace of mind that it affords the community, the negative effects outweigh the benefits quite often. Could this position be considered an unarmed position, right? There's no necessary reason that we have to have a gun, because, let's face the reality, if someone was to come onto the school property and have intent of harm, there's no way that officer is gonna go from the front door all the way to the back door within a timely manner that's gonna have really much benefit. And most of the time, the people that do, you know, these horrible actions to schools are far more gunned and armed than the police officers that are actually there. And there usually are police officers at these events. So the existence of an officer there doesn't necessarily change that individual's decision or how they're going to act. What it does change is the experience that the students are gonna have. The students often do develop a negative relationship. Yes, they can develop a positive relationship, one hundred percent, I agree with that. But it really depends on the qualifications of the individual that we bring in. So when I'm thinking about the minimum qualifications that were put forth, you know, five years of experience in law enforcement, mentioning the experience of an SRO is desirable. It doesn't really give much of a parameter of what this person's background is as far as educational responsibilities. It's just giving their, you know, law enforcement background, which I understand from the law enforcement position is what you're looking for. But I want to ensure that this person is understanding the importance of the position, that they are not an active police officer, but rather a mentor, educator, and a relationship builder. Of course, they may get involved in skirmishes, but their involvement is to de-escalate the situation, not enforce laws on school grounds, which you did answer that, saying that they would not necessarily be enforcing, but there's contradictory statements that say they would be enforcing. And so as far as the, you know, qualifications that we're looking at, I'm interested to what involvement you're gonna have from the school system directly, so whether that's central office or the Board of Education, to help determine who this individual is, or is it just strictly a police officer decision? Because if it's just a police department decision, we're not gonna necessarily get someone that understands the gravity of the actual position. They're rather just a retired cop looking for something to do, which is what I experienced growing up. We had these sort of officers, and they didn't provide any value to the school, rather, they provided a detriment to, you know, the people that were listed exactly from what Carmody said. You know, you're dealing with minority populations, you're going to have disabled, you know, disabled individuals up the wazoo having issues, because a lot of times, the officers that are in place don't have a full understanding of how to deal with intellectually disabled people. And the community in general doesn't necessarily get any benefit from someone standing around armed, threatening-looking, because police do have that threatening look. I don't think it dissuades any real activity or crime, but more disrupts the actual experience of the students. Done. Pretty much what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes.
The motion passed. The description is approved. And I think that's all we have for you two tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go on to item ten, I think I'm gonna take item eleven first. And this is the, we have Gaylord Hospital back here. Counselor Laffin.
Do you guys wanna come forward again? I'll start talking while you're walking in. So we talked about this at our last meeting. There was a lot of back and forth, and the council basically wanted more time to decide. I didn't talk to anybody really about it, but I reflected on my own. I know you guys, you just kind of had the gauntlet up there this past weekend. You do a lot of, Gaylord does do a lot of other events and sponsorships. I know that this is, you're asking for a lot of money for the hospital, for this wing, that, well, really, on the scale of things, we can't necessarily just look at it as how many Wallingford patients are going to be in this wing. I'm hoping that any support that goes towards this, then in the future, we can see even more events or sponsorships, community involvement. I've been to events at Gaylord, and I know there is a varying level of business exchange, whether it's- of, of business exchange, whether it's spaces are rented or donated and whatnot. So all of that, I hope, um, not that I'm looking to broker a specific deal, but just that things like this will be taken into consideration. I'm also going to note, uh, as you saw earlier, there are only six of us here. You need five. You can only lose one person tonight, um, or the whole thing's gone. So, um, everybody else can think about that too as we talk, because I'm going to throw out a number to start and I'm willing for people to throw in amendments or discussions, uh, for either up or down. I move, we approve ARPA funds for Gaylord Hospital Incorporated in the amount of $350,000 from the revenue federal grant account to the ARPA and nonprofits accounts.
Second. Moved seconded by Counselor Carmody.
And again, not that I can't, I want to talk about where we go up or whatever, but or down. But I wanted to put something on the table for us to start with.
Counselor Fishbein.
So I, I had a ball. You know, um, one of these times you guys should video because, um, I didn't know about the blind athletes, you know, and to, and to the people that actually do this thing, you know, I'm pretty fit and it's tough. But then, you know, for people to go through, um, this with, you know, don't have limbs, can't see, you know, it's just, it's, it's an amazing thing and it, and it brings the community together. We, you know, we don't have anything else like that. You know, so I try and detach myself from, from that, you know, because I've been doing it, I think, every year. It's just amazing. Um, you know, I look at the money that we've given to other groups and try to compare this, um, to the application. I know at our last meeting, we gave 317,000 for the, the van situation. Um, I, I think what you could do with this money and your vision, I mean, the, the campus is beautiful. What you do, I mean, the bathroom that I changed in was, was a temple. I mean, uh, it's just, it isn't, I mean, it's part of our town. I, somebody took a picture of me on the course, somebody happens to know me from Middlefield. And I said, I didn't see out there. And he said, well, I volunteer because Gaylord lets the girls use the softball fields. You know, that's giving back. You know, so I credit that. I, I don't think 350 is enough. My number is 500 and I, I think that, you know, the original ask is a number to consider, but I too agree that I think it's, it's, it was too much in perspective. You know, we haven't even talked about municipal projects because a lot of that's been held up. Other towns are, are doing great things for their town. I know you guys were hurt by COVID and, you know, the, you know, just the, the fact that you couldn't do anything without masks and we don't want to go back there and relive all that stuff and, you know. But, you know, I, I think I'm comfortable with a higher number. So, uh, we have a motion and a second and I'll motion to make it 500. We'll see where it goes.
So I'll consider that an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Testa. Okay. Counselor Carmody.
Good evening. Um, you know, I, I think Craig really hits it on the head. I, you, you do tremendous work and no one could deny that. And, you know, you impact people's lives so, you know, amazingly, um, people all over the world even. Uh, and so of course I, I think this council wants to support you, um, in, in your efforts here. I had a couple of questions about some of the finances though. Do you know how much money you got from PPP during COVID?
Yes. Um, I believe it was 1.6 million.
And then I, I don't know if your hospital got a FEMA grant. I, I heard that Midstate recently got a FEMA grant in the amount of about 17 million dollars.
We did not.
You did not get any money?
We did not receive any other federal funding other than the, the original, um, 1.6. I think it was 1.6 million.
And then I, I was just looking at your packet here. There was, um, it looked like you had $34 million on hand and $36 million in investment, in investments. And so I, I was just curious if you can explain again, uh, the real, the need, uh, for this grant from the town.
I'm not sure what numbers they're referencing in the application. So Roz was more familiar with the specifics in the application. I can.
I think if you already haven't, you should reintroduce yourselves for the record for the meeting.
So my name is Sonia Labarber. I'm the president and CEO at Gaylord. I've been there 18 years and a proud resident of Wallingford as well.
Hi, I'm Tara Knapp. I'm vice president for external affairs and I am also a Wallingford resident and I've been at Gaylord for 20 years.
Good evening. My name is Rosalyn Gilholy. I'm a Wallingford resident, Harnish Lane, and a employee at Gaylord.
And so you ref, uh, you're referencing, forgive me.
I'm looking at this balance sheet.
Oh, here we are.
It says cash, not interest-bearing. Beginning of year, 31 million.
Are you looking at the, on the last page of the application?
Yeah, I think that's it.
So your question is?
I just, I guess, I was just asking, uh, because this is a, a need application, right? You, you're asking, and I, if you could explain that need. Uh, because to me, it looks like you have a lot of money on hand and, and so I, I obviously don't know your financials like you do. And so I was just asking for that explanation.
So certainly with regard to this particular project, the total amount was, has swollen more than 3.5 million dollars more than originally anticipated. The operating revenue at Gaylord currently is behind budget year-to-date.
We're running about a million dollars, um, in the negative for our operating margin for this fiscal year. The, the, the cash on hand, I think that you're referring to, and again, I'm, I'm not looking at the financials, probably relates to, um, restrict, restricted monies that are in an endowment, um, that we wouldn't have access to for a project like this, would be my guess.
That's correct. That's, that's notifying the permanently restricted funds that are endowed.
You know, I'm, so I'm looking at the 990.
Oh, you're looking at the 990?
Yeah, that's what it is. But I, I mean, you answered my question. I, I just, um, you know, this is, uh, we didn't put a cap on the amount nonprofits could receive. I, I don't think I was expecting anyone to request a million dollars. Um, you know, obviously this, that's, that's a huge ask and, um, you know, this is the people's money and, and we are the protectors of that money. And so I, I just, I think, you know, I, I certainly want to see this council do something to assist you. You're a great organization. You know, I, I, I think I preferred Mr. Laffin's, um, amount over Counselor Fishbein's. But I, I will, um, you know, I'd like to hear everyone out for more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I, I can tell you that I have, in, in addition to attending events at your facility, um, I have had the opportunity on multiple occasions to, uh, visit the patient rooms of your facility when visiting clients. And I have to say, from, from the first time I visited over the years until the most recent time I visited, um, I have been impressed with the quality of care that you do provide for your patients. One of the clients I visited was in, um, a cognitive care portion of your hospital. And aside from seeing how your staff treated this patient, um, I was able to talk to him about the variety of care and programming that you provided to deal with his injury. You know, this, this wasn't a guy who, you know, over the last 30 years, um, you know, lost track of the days of the week. This was a guy who suffered a traumatic brain injury. So, uh, and I, and recently I've noted when I've attended your, um, there, there is some remodeling going on, uh, and, and it limits what you can do. I mean, you can't put a patient in a room where there's construction. Nonetheless, the, the parts of your facility that, uh, that are operating, um, I'll, I'll note, were pleasant, um, clean. And one thing that I note about your facility that I don't always observe in, in various facilities, and I'm not going to isolate any or point them out, um, but there's something peaceful about your place. I don't know how you do it, but please, please keep doing it. So, you know, thank you. Mr. Chairman. Mayor.
When, when did, uh, when did Gaylord start? What year?
1902.
1902.
Yep, 1902.
A very special, singular place in Wallingford history. And your wooded environs have been a peaceful place for so many people. I, I really, I think, given what they do and how they change lives, their requests should be funded by us. It fits squarely with the purpose of ARPA funding and they're actually providing the medical care. And I believe there were several patients who, because of COVID, had complete paralysis and you cared for them and they recovered. That, it's, it's, it's beyond many of the requests we, we, we were given for ARPA funds. I, I think you more than deserve what your request is.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just add again, background information. There are two units that we're renovating. Um, one was built in the 50s and one was built in the 70s and were quite dated. And, um, it was important to bring these up to snuff. And the project started at 5 million and it grew to 13 million. And as you said, Chairman Cervone, it's very hard to do any renovations while you have patients in the rooms. And so right from the get-go, our renovations are more expensive than if you have a medical office building where, you know, it's empty and you can retrofit. We have to worry about those cognitive patients. Um, we have to worry about noise and sound. We have pulmonary patients and we have to worry about the dust. We could only do a few rooms at a time, which automatically made the entire project more expensive. But during COVID, we had to not only shut down, we had to take some of the shuttered rooms and open them up again so that we could be a good neighbor to all the hospitals around us. You know, Yale, Hartford, Midstate, their ICUs and emergency rooms were just packed with patients during the height of the crisis. And they needed to move patients immediately out of their ICUs into Gaylord in order to allow them to take the more acute patients that were coming through the door. And then several months later, we were taking all of those COVID patients who had been within those hospitals for months and rehabilitating them so that they would be able to return to work and return to their lives. And the renovations have stopped and started several times and now the costs are through the roof. When we think about ARPA funding, the intent has been to help those organizations that were severely impacted and businesses that were severely impacted during COVID. And we continue to provide services even though it was difficult and even though we had to shutter some of our own outpatient, uh, facilities and clinics, we continued to work and we continue to serve not just the people of Wallingford, but really the entire state. And, you know, we continued to give business and to get takeout food and buy from Neils Donuts and all of these other small businesses all around us that were also trying to survive during COVID. We had a full workforce and we were helping support the community at the same time that we were trying to support the patients. So I know that it's an outsized ask, but I also know that in the scheme of things, what we were accomplishing was unprecedented and outsized as well. And in relation to our operating budget or even the size of the project at 13 million, it's a smaller percentage of the project and it's a, I think it was, uh, Counselor Allison who was saying that the 1 million ask is what, about 6.7% of the 13 million ARPA funds that you have to give out. I'm sure that, you know, a lot of other organizations were asking for 6%, 10%, even 50% of their projects through ARPA funding. It's just that the scope of their project was so much less than ours. But this represents about 6% of our 13 million dollars. And, you know, we're really hoping that you could, um, you know, consider supporting this ask, knowing that it will make a difference and it will help us get this renovation, you know, to the finish line because three out of the four units have been completed and this is really the critical final one. And once it's done, it will allow us to open additional beds in order to serve even more people. Thank you.
So the mayor, uh, wanted to remind us how long you've been in town and just based on what you've told us, you've come a long way since tuberculosis treatment, right?
That's for sure.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. So I'm sure as you've been following along with ARPA, you know, I haven't been, um, supportive of any of the businesses or nonprofits because I've had, um, serious concerns with the process, which I don't need to rehash tonight because I feel like everybody knows because I bring it up almost every meeting. But I, I do have serious concerns about the, the entire ARPA process. I, for example, and this is through no fault of your own at all, um, but there were other entities who were not afforded the opportunity to present before us. Again, not your fault, I'm not blaming you at all. But now you've been here twice to kind of plead your case and, and I, I think that, uh, gives you an unfair advantage, um, as opposed to those other entities that maybe weren't afforded that. And that's, that's not on you, that's, that's on us. But, um, my point of view, um, of the ARPA from day one was, you know, not, not necessarily how much good an organization does, because you certainly do and it's very difficult. You know, it's very difficult for me to, to not, you know, to sit here and not want to give you anything because I know how great you do and, and, Ms. Knapp, I'm sorry, you're, you're like one of my favorite people in town. And so it's, it's very difficult. But I do, I do just feel like I need to remain consistent, um, with how I've, I've been treating ARPA and so, um, again, I, I don't think I can support this. And it, it does, it certainly does put you at a disadvantage because there are three counselors missing.
Did anybody give us any proxy votes? Is there any envelopes or anything?
No, I, I did want to bring up, I know, um, you know, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe that's what they're talking about. I know like with ZVA, if there's, you know, if there's people missing and applicant comes and, and they say, um, you know, you would need everybody to vote yes, they give them the opportunity to come back. I don't think that same, uh, opportunity is afforded with the council. But I just wanted to let you know where I stand and let everybody else know where I stand. I think everyone kind of knows that's, that's been my consistent, um, approach on all of these, but, uh, I do kind of feel for you and that you're missing three others if that, if that's going to affect it. So again, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's absolutely nothing against, against you or your work. I think I'm so glad you're in Wallingford and, um, I just, I just don't think I can support it, just to remain consistent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein.
I just briefly had a reference to math and percentages and all that stuff and I just, um, just so that you guys know, the public knows, when we started this process, we sort of created three pockets. One was for businesses, one was for nonprofit and one was for municipal projects. And basically in the, the first two pockets, we put about $3 million just to round off for nonprofits, for businesses. So when one says, I don't know where that 6% came from, but, um, when you're asking for a million dollars from 3 million, it's a third. So just to put that into perspective.
Thank you. I didn't know that part.
No problem. So thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I see no other hands up here. All right. I see no other hands up here. Mr. Gershia, I think you wanted to speak about this. You were the first one at the mic all night, and you've been waiting ever since.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry that I was out of order. Again, Leonard Gershia, North Brier.
You were really fine. You were not out of order.
I'm not going to read my letter. I submitted a letter. I am living proof. On March 28th of 2020, I was taken to Yale New Hospital in respiratory arrest. I spent 29 days in ICU intubated. I could not walk. I had atrophy in my legs. I was transported by an ambulance to Gaylord Hospital. And one month in the Lyman II area that these ladies are asking for money to rehab, I was giving my life back. They told me later that Lyman was slated to be closed, and they opened it up for COVID. More than a million people in our country died. And all due respect to everybody's positions, counselors, I'm a paramedic, but I implore you to please provide some level of funding to this organization. It's not just a quiet place on the hill. Counselor Fishbein, I recognize you as one of the runners that came through my station as a volunteer on Saturday. There was a young woman in a wheelchair being towed by rehab folks from a car crash. I mean, listen, I don't understand politics. This is real life. I have three children and a wife that I love very much. And these ladies and their team gave me my life back. I mean that. If you take nothing away from what I tell you tonight, I was carried on the wings of angels to a place on the hill that I'd never even visited to come back. And now, I've already committed to volunteer. And I implore you, as a lifelong Wallingford resident, please, this is very important. Listen, everything is important that needs money, but I could not walk. And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I went a little bit more, and I get passionate, but I wouldn't be here if they hadn't taught me how to walk.
You actually have 45 more seconds.
Well, I'm done. But, you know, if you ever get to meet Maria, the PCA, came in at 4:00 in the morning and said, "We're going to walk today." And I said, "My legs say no." These ladies provided the avenue. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Jesse Reynolds, 850 Old Durham Road. I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and this is mostly because Mr. Gross isn't here. They put in that $2.6 million was applied for an ARPA, plus they received a $1.6 million in PPP. So, that's more than that. And then there was the other part that you used to update your electronic health record. And what I'm about to say now, though, if you heard the first part, is I think you should get all the money. And I think they should get all the money because they filled out the application right. And if you found that the money was too much, that's on y'all because you didn't put any constraints on how much money you could apply for. They are saying it's going to cost $13 million to renovate our hospital, to get it to a point where, if COVID happens again, which again is the point of ARPA, they will be ready to hit the ground running. See, that's the whole element of what the money was supposed to be for. Yes, everybody could apply. Yes, everybody had amounts. Yes, everybody had backup. But in my opinion, when I reviewed the application, they should get the full amount because what they're asking for is not outside the realm of what the money was intended for, as well as the fact that it's well justified in what they need it for, as well as the fact that they're also willing to put up $13 million of private and public funds of the money that they got on their own to be supplemented by a million dollars, which they couldn't raise because of COVID. So, to me, it's kind of a slam dunk application. Is the money a lot? Yeah. Is it a big ask? Yeah. But you know whose fault it is? Yours. Because you didn't put any, you didn't put any, you didn't put any rails on. You didn't tell anybody that there's too much. In fact, you let people apply for whatever they wanted. They didn't do anything wrong. Reducing the amount is fine, but you didn't reduce the $317,000 other than asking if they would park the van behind a building somewhere in town. These folks, and again, when I was on the committee, when we were in the full committee, we discussed this application, and this one got pushed to the very end because it was way too much money, and we didn't know what to do, and it was coming back to you anyway. So, if you feel some obligation to maintain a thing, we were going to send it to you all anyway and give them the right to talk about it because it was a lot of money. But, that being all said, is a million dollars a lot of money? Yeah. Do I want a million dollars? Sure. But do I have a reason to apply for ARPA for it? No. These folks do. I think you should give them the full amount. And, you know, the last words I ever said to my grandfather, we're in the parking lot there, and my cousin, who's 10-year survivor of brain cancer, was just taught to walk and talk again there. So, you know, it's a good place. So, give them the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I bring it back to the council. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I brought it up before, but I think, just wanted to maybe see what the council's thoughts are. So, I've stated where, you know, where I am on this. And again, I don't want, I don't want them to be, you know, kind of punished or put in a bad spot because there are three counselors missing. So, I'm not sure what we do with that. So, I'm basically telling you I'm voting against you, but I'm kind of pushing for you at the same time. So, I...
I guess we'll see what happens.
If it does not pass, then are they completely, is that completely done for them? Or would they get another stab at it if we had a full council present?
You know...
I know, I know that I'm the one creating this problem. I understand.
We've certainly reconsidered decisions we've made. And after the council has not approved something, it's come back later and been approved. And actually, the one example I'm thinking of, votes changed. So, there's nothing that precludes them from coming back before us or from a counselor putting it back on an agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I previously had shared my own experience with Gaylord, so I don't need to again. I was just, I was just struck by a million dollars. And I appreciate what Mr. Reynolds has said. But I look at the big pool. I look at all we've had to consider, all that we would like to do, all that we're not going to be able to do because of decisions that have been made up to this point. And there's not a lot left, even though this was in an original pool. A million dollars was just, I really had a hard time with that. And I was looking at the other couple of large awards we made. Really had mixed feelings about the $300-plus thousand that we awarded the YMCA. Nothing against the YMCA, but I mean, I was like, wow. And, you know, and it was because it's an organization that, you know, has access to so many different avenues of fundraising, and they do pretty darn well. And while, after we gave it to them, we discovered they, one of our state, I believe Congressman DeLoro arranged for a large grant recently for them. Just, I don't hold that against them. I'm just saying, there's, the businesses, the standalone nonprofits were really, their only avenue was, if we can't raise it, to be facetious, if we can't raise it in a bake sale, we're not getting it. And, or to try to put something together. But a professional organization has other avenues. And you've proven that. You've, I can't even imagine what you've gone through to raise what you've raised so far. It's what you do. But I thought about the same about the why. It wasn't like we were the only option they had. But I saw $300-something thousand for the YMCA, and I said, whoo, that's a big chunk. But, you know, I could understand the reasoning behind doing it. And they had and clearly have found other money and will continue to find other money. Same way with the medical award we made. So, I was thinking to myself, you know, I definitely want to give you something. And so, I was trying to, I was gauging it as what Counselor Carmody brought up, $350.00. I said, well, that's in line with the largest, roughly the largest amount we've agreed to. I have no problem with that. And I was, and I was thinking, you know, we could maybe do a little more. And Counselor Fishbein conveniently suggested a half a million. And I'm okay, I'm good with that. I'm good with the half a million. I'm sorry, I could not say yes to a million. But I do think a half a million is going to be a big help to you in what you're trying to accomplish. So, I'm going to vote for the amendment, and hopefully, we will all vote for that amount. Appears it's in the hands of the five of us. So, that's all. Thank you.
With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment first. Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes. The amendment passes. Now, the roll call on the motion as amended.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes. You got five, and you've got half a million.
Thank you very much.
Point of order? So, will this require a funding request from the administration?
Yes.
Okay. So, we've agreed, we've approved this, but it's still going to have to go through...
Yeah. It'll come back to us.
Another meeting.
Just like...
Just so we know the process.
Just like the medevan.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to double check.
Thank you for your time and your...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Back to item 10 regarding the RFP. I move we use the request for proposal process for hiring a new bond counsel. Is there a second? I will second it.
Oh, second.
Yeah. Attorney Small, you have the floor.
So, I was just looking to shortcut the 30 days so that we can hopefully finalize it in the next week and get it out. At this point, it's appropriate to...
Meet the different firms that are out there. I'm not, you know, I think the number of firms that do bond work keeps shrinking, last I knew. So, this would be an opportunity to meet the firms that are in the business and make a selection on that basis. You know, when you're hiring an attorney, you know, it's as much about the relationship as it is about the funding. So, that's what we're looking to do.
Counselor Fishbein.
You know, it's weird that we're discussing this in open session. It just feels like something that ordinarily we would do. So, I'm going to ask the questions. I mean, why? I mean, we've had Mr. Fozzie, Attorney Fozzie, for years. He went to Pullman and Comley. The decision was made without our input to continue with him, even though he was with Pullman and Comley. Nothing against them. I've worked with them before. And now, we all of a sudden get a memorandum saying it's suggested that we terminate that relationship and get somebody new. So, I have to ask why?
Well, he's retiring.
Okay.
So, it seems to be a good opportunity to see all the different firms that are out there. I mean, we've been satisfied with Joe Fozzie for years. I mean, maybe not all of you, but we have, Controller has. And so, I wouldn't just accept, if he's not going to be our bond counsel, then I think we should go and see what's out there.
Yeah, it was just a little weird. We get this memo saying something about we should get new bond counsel. And I'm like, well, you know, who got arrested? Who did this? You know, it wasn't, you know, due to the fact that Attorney Fozzie is going to be retired...
Okay, I thought you already knew that. So, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that nobody knew that. So, yes, he's retiring, and this is an opportune time to do that. I'm sorry. I did think people knew that. So, I sent the memo so that we could get it out sooner than 30, because the ordinance requires us to tell you that we're looking to do that, use that procedure. You can object within 30 days. So, I wanted to shortcut the 30 days so we can get it out. That's all. But I didn't, I apologize. I didn't realize. I thought everybody knew that.
I don't know how we would know, but...
I don't know.
You've got a lot to do. I got it. Is there, I mean, our contract presently is not with Attorney Fozzie. It's with Pullman because he was a partner, right? So, is there somebody else there?
There are people there, but they would be able to respond to the RFP. I think, you know, this is an opportune time to see what different firms are out there doing that.
So, we have a contract with that entity that we're allowed to break based upon his retirement? I don't know. These are all questions that I would ordinarily ask, like, in an executive session sort of thing, but...
Why would we have executive session on this?
I don't know. It's sort of like a, it's sort of a personnel issue, right? You know...
No, no.
I know it's not, but it sort of is. We're talking about somebody going away, their replacement, you know, all that stuff. So, I mean, we have a contract that allows us to break that's with Pullman and Comley?
Yeah. We don't, we are entitled to go out at this point in time.
Okay. So, that means that our contract is tied to fiscal years, and because we're coming upon the end of the fiscal year, we have the...
Coming upon the end of the fiscal year, and we really, it was really about, you know, the council that we had. So, we're good on that.
I don't know what that means.
Well, we went with Fozzie. I mean, if Fozzie hadn't stayed in the bonding business, we would have looked somewhere else sooner.
Okay. All right. That answers all the questions?
Yeah. I think we, you know, this is an opportunity to see, you know, I think fewer and fewer firms are doing it. I think we should see what's out there for council.
And are we going to, I know that Mr. Attorney Fozzie was paid for attendance at meetings, and we didn't have the remote sort of situation then. Are we contemplating being able to save the town money by having them remote as opposed to having to come here?
I mean, we didn't, I don't think that would be in the bid specs. But I know that the proposed sheet for finances is pretty, it's broken down.
I would think we would still want an attorney to be here. Trying to have people answer questions when they're not here is just not the greatest process. So, if there's an issue over having that legal advice here, the attorney should be here.
Yeah. I just, in my experience, there's really, other than mine, there's very few questions for the individual. So, I know, you know, he's usually sitting over there. We've more than likely compensated him to travel here, travel back, and all that stuff. And, you know, I just look to see if...
Yeah. I mean, the issue, I mean, if I'm sitting here and it's a question on the bond ordinance, I'm not answering it. You know, that's really what it's, I have no business answering bond ordinance questions because I don't deal with bonds. So, but, you know, in terms of whether somebody could be remote or not, that certainly could be addressed, you know, under the circumstances of a given time. So...
I think for the most part, the questions are actually the Controller's office. You know, do we actually intend to set out these bonds, that kind of stuff?
I mean, we have, over the years, he's had to answer some questions. I mean, but you're right. It's not, it's sporadic, but if it comes up, the person sitting here is not going to answer it because it's dealing with bonds. So...
I understand. I'm comfortable with where we are based upon the answer. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. All aye. The motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a...
If two of us say no, we have to stay, right?
Oh, you can stay. I'll leave.
You have to run the meeting.
No, I don't. You will.
Nothing on the agenda. You can't do anything.
Yep. We can waive rule fives.
All right.
I can get people here.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting so we can stop talking about adjourning the meeting. I'm going to adjourn the meeting so we can stop talking about adjourned the meeting.